Special Town Meeting warrant, so they're better prepared for Special Town Meeting on October 16. This event is being recorded and live streamed by Westford Cat and will be available for later viewing on YouTube or the Westford Cat website. I'd like to just say a few words about the League. The League of Women Voters encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League is a nonpartisan political organization of women and men and does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. You can learn more at LWV-Westford.org. Also on our website are a series of short videos recorded by League member Anita Tonakarnwin and Town Moderator Angela Harkness explaining various aspects of Town Meeting. They're a great resource for all residents in Westford, and we encourage you to go over to our website and watch them. With us tonight are several town officials who will explain and answer questions about the articles. They are Dan O'Donnell, Finance Director, Angela Harkness, Town Moderator, Eric Heidman, Assistant Town Manager, Andrea Perrin-Sweet, Select Board Chair, and Jody Ross, Town Manager. Tonight's format will follow the articles in the order they are listed on the warrant. Each article will be explained by a town official. You can follow along with the warrant, which should be visible on the screen. You may ask questions via the Q and A button in Zoom. We will take questions for each article as we go along, and I will monitor the chat for both questions and comments and try to get you an answer. We encourage as many questions as possible. This is a great chance for you to learn more about not just the articles, but Town Meeting in general. And in that vein, I would first like to introduce Angela Harkness, Town Moderator, who will give us some information about how the Special Town Meeting will be held this year. Angela?
Well, thank you, Laura, and thank you to the League for hosting this always informative and interesting event. And as everyone can see on the screen, our Special Town Meeting is scheduled for Saturday, October 16, beginning at 1:00 PM, so that's a week from this coming Saturday. If the weather is inclement or rainy, the rain date will be Sunday, October 17, beginning at 10:00 AM. If on the day of Town Meeting you have any question as to whether the weather, as to whether or not the weather is appropriate for Town Meeting, you can find information as to a cancellation on the Town website. It'll be there and obvious right away. So as I said, the Town Meeting will be held at the Westford Academy Trustees Field, the football field at Town Meeting. We need a quorum of 200 people in order to conduct the meeting, so it's very important that voters attend. If you are a registered voter in Westford, you can attend and vote at Town Meeting. If you've never been before, please join us. This is the perfect Town Meeting to get your feet wet. We don't anticipate it going on for too long. There are nine articles on the warrant, which you'll be hearing about shortly, one of which is going to be dismissed, so really eight articles. And I anticipate that may take an hour to two at the most, perhaps even less than that. So please do join us, even if you've never been with us before. Yeah, I think that's it for an introduction, and I hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Now we're going to start going through the warrant articles. Please remember to put any questions you have in the Q and A window, and we will try to get you an answer. So the first article is the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Adjustments. Jody, can you tell us about those?
Sure, thank you. So in this article, we're asking to appropriate from Free Cash the sum of $165,230. The reasons are that in the Treasure Collector, last year when we were in the throes of COVID, not that we're not this year, but we weren't sure about our finances, I actually did not fill an opening that occurred when someone left, and that is a part-timer who helps the Treasure Collector collect taxes. So I'd like to reinstate that person, and the cost of that is $15,000. So that is the first request. And the second two requests are Fire Department Personal Services, which is $150,230, and Ambulance Enterprise Personal Services, which is 200, I mean, 2, excuse me, $24,889. And that is to fund the first year of a contract, a collective bargaining agreement with the Firefighters Association, and that will fund the first year. So that is the purpose for that.
Great, thank you. I don't see any questions, so we will move on to Article Two, which is Approve the Fiscal Year 2022 Capital Appropriations. And Dan, you were going to speak to this?
Sure. So here we have five appropriations that we're requesting Town Meeting to approve. The first one is for the Cameron Senior Center's HVAC design. Right now, the system is not working very well at all. There's actually three different systems working together to power the HVAC, and it's not working that great. So we're getting in the process, going to design a new HVAC and hopefully have a request for the construction later on this year. Next up is $100,000 to replace the Rogers Fire Station roof. This has been the capital plan for about five years now, and it's currently leaking. So, you know, it has reached its end of useful life. Then the third item coming from Free Cash is for the Blanchard Mill School schematic design. The Town applied for Massachusetts School Building Authority loan, which hopefully we'll hear later this month whether or not we've been approved that project. But the plan is to move forward with the design now and then possibly come forward with the funding next October at the Special Town Meeting. There have been questions about this article and whether they're going to build in solar on the rooftop, and that is part of this $90,000 to investigate that. So next up, we have $25,000 coming from the Water Enterprise retained earnings. This is for the design of the Depot Street well. Currently, the well is not pumping a capacity. It has lost, after cleaning it, our vendors have suggested that we move forward with the replacement. So this is the request to get that going. And then lastly, the second motion here is for $470,000 to be transferred to the Capital Stabilization Fund. Back in October 2018, when the Town agreed to purchase 63 Main Street, we took money from Capital Stabilization Fund with the understanding that we would pay it back. And so here we are about to sell the property, and we want a replenish of funds and do as, keep our promise and do what we said to restore that money to capital stabilization. If this is approved, the balance in the Capital Stabilization Fund will be just over $1.1 million.
That's great. It's nice to see it coming back full circle. I don't see any questions on that. Remember, you can type in your questions, if you, anything you want to know about. Article Three is amend the general bylaws to establish a revolving fund for the electric vehicle charging stations. Eric, can you tell us about this?
Thank you, Laura. It'd help if I unmuted myself. Thank you. So in fiscal year '21, the Town received roughly $235,000 from the Mass EVIT program and National Grid incentives to install 12 dual-head charging stations for electric vehicles at Westford Academy, Abbott School, and Town Hall. We are actually in the process of finalizing the installation at all three sites. This is to provide a method for us to track revenue and expenses associated with the charging station uses. They're all going to be separately metered, so we'll be able to track everything through this revolving account.
So people basically will pay to use the charging stations?
Correct.
And then that money goes into the account?
Yes. So we will be using a program known as Amp Up. It's an app on your phone where you'll be able to scan our charging stations and pay for your charging services. So all the revenue that's received will be deposited into this account. There is an annual operating charge for the software of approximately $4,600 for all three sites. So we do hope to at least break even, because we'd like to see these charging stations used. So we're going to set the rates based on market rates in the area.
Cool. Thank you. And I think that goes right into Article Four then, which is Establish FY22 Spending Limits for Electric Vehicle Charging Station and Recycling Revolving Funds. Speak to that as well.
Sure. So I'll jump to the second one first. So it's kind of related to Article Three. So this is just to set the expenditure limit out of the previous revolving account of $10,000. We do believe that will be sufficient, but we'll have to revisit that year to year based on how much revenue we bring in from charging. The second one is for the recycling revolving account, which is overseen by the Recycling Commission. They've had an increase in different initiatives such as increased hazardous waste collection days. So they are needing an increase in their expenditure limit, and that's what we're asking for here.
Great, thank you. Oh, we have a question, actually, going back to Article Two. I think about the wanting to know if the Cameron Senior Center HVAC will include options for an energy-efficient heat pump. We know, Dan, or?
I'm happy to answer that, Laura, if you'd like.
Oh, Eric. Oh, okay, sure. Yeah, yeah. Or clean energy, I thought.
So we're going to be looking at all energy-efficient options. Right now, the existing system is a variable flow refrigerant system, which provides primarily cooling for the building. There is a separate boiler system that provides heat. So we are likely going to be looking at a similar system incorporating either a heat pump system. There is a system made by Mitsubishi, for example. It's a variable flow refrigerant system that's very efficient. So we're hoping to explore the best option available, and the Facilities Director, Paul Fox, is working closely with the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee and the Permanent Town Building Committee on this project.
Oh, great. Thank you. Okay, I think we are now up to Article Five. Establish a Health Insurance Trust Fund and transfer the balance in the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund to the Health Insurance Trust Fund. Jody, can you tell us about this?
Sure. So we hired a new health insurance broker this spring, and it's Mark Chris Telly, I'm sorry, of Hub International. It's a little more difficult to say than Ross, but anyway, he provided us with data on becoming self-funded for our health insurance. And the data showed that if the Town were to get a stop-loss policy, we believe we could save our Town and our employees significant dollars in health insurance. So basically, his analysis went back three years and showed that if we had been partially self-funded for the past three years, we would have saved about $2.4 million. Now, with our employees, we share health insurance. The Town pays 65%. The employees pay 35%. So you'd have to do the math on that, but it's significant dollars. So if Town Meeting approves this, the Select Board will appoint trustees. My suggested trustees would be by the position, not by the person. So it would be the Town Manager, Town Treasurer, HR Director, a member of our Insurance Advisory Committee, a Select Board Member, and a Finance Committee Member. The Finance Director, Dan, and our Town Accountant, Jesse, would be very deeply involved in this, and our hub, our new broker, would also participate in every meeting. The trustees would determine the premiums and the stop-loss levels, and the trustees would have a fiduciary responsibility to assure sufficient levels in the trust, sufficient funding to pay all current and future claims. Right now, the recommended balance for that trust fund would be about $3.6 million. It would be our plan, if Town Meeting approves, to transfer $733,000 plus interest to this fund, which is currently sitting in our Health Insurance Stabilization Fund. So what are the pros to doing this? Well, obviously, the savings is significant, and those savings could be used for other purposes. We would be paying lower premium taxes. Right now, we have, well, we have Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they pay taxes and pass that on to us, but we would only have to pay taxes for the stop-loss policy. Also, we would have lower insurance profit margins. Right now, Blue Cross Blue Shield does put a buffer on our health insurance plan, and that would be removed. So we would have immediate savings. We would be eligible for pharmacy rebates, and we aren't now, and that would be to the tune of about $215,000 in savings a year. We would have better, more timely data about our healthcare usage, and any excess funding over our predetermined amount could be come out as a premium holiday for the Town and the employees, and it would have to be distributed at the same percent that it goes into the trust. Over time, our savings can be used to offset future increases in years when claims are higher than we actually projected. So if we do decide to do this, our expectation is that our premium for this year may drop from 4.9% increase down to about a 2.5% increase. What are the cons? Well, there's higher volatility in monthly costs. That's why we need to have a trust fund balance that can handle that. It's more complex. The formulation of the trust and different accounting procedures are more complex. But I would say that we have a very high-level functioning finance department and team, and so I feel completely confident that we can handle these challenges. It does require more discipline. We need to set rates at realistic amounts, and Hub will provide us with actuarial underwriting and support for setting rates. So that's probably a lot to digest, but I've been looking for something like this for years for the Town, and we finally got the data, and I would say our Town Financial Team, our Insurance Advisory, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee have all voted in favor of pursuing this.
I see the recommendations. Can you just briefly explain what a stop-loss policy is?
Yes. So what that means is that we would have a secondary policy that would cover us for very high claims. So for example, we haven't determined what we would set that at, but if we set it at $100,000, any claim that came in over $100,000, and those would be serious claims, whether someone was fighting cancer or whether there was, you know, a birth that occurred with conditions or something else, that would protect us from those high claims. So as I mentioned, the amount has not been determined yet, but it would probably be $100,000 or $125,000, and that would give us protection against devastating claims like that.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any questions on that, but?
One thing I might add, Laura, is that many, many other towns do this, and so this is not something that Westford is just going out on a limb. Many towns do this. Neshoba Valley Technical High School is in a program of self-funded, partially self-funded, but they're with other schools or municipalities, but many towns are doing this, and it's working very well. So as long as you're disciplined, which I fully expect us to be, then it could save the Town significant money for the future and our employees.
Great. I'll want that. Okay, no questions. So I'll move on to Article Six, which is to approve funding for an energy savings performance audit. And this is back to Eric.
Thank you, Laura. So Article Six would approve $75,000 to conduct a town-wide energy audit. So when we talk about an audit, what are we talking about? Looking at things such as lighting, HVAC, building envelope improvements such as insulation or windows, different renewable energy upgrades that we can do. So the audit is actually the first phase in what the Town's actually considering, which is an energy-saving performance contract. This is initiative we've been working on quite some time, and it's highly supported by the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, who've been actively involved. So upon completion of this proposed audit, the contractor would provide the Town with a detailed list of potential projects along with their estimated energy savings. If the Town were to decide to move forward with an overall performance contract, the $75,000 audit fee would not be required to be paid immediately, but rather that cost would be rolled into the overall financing associated with the performance project. So if the Town always has the option at the end of the audit process to pursue these identified projects individually through a traditional capital planning process, if we did do that, we would actually, that would be when we would owe the $75,000 audit fee. So a performance contract, you're probably wondering what that is. So it's an agreement to install a portfolio of energy-saving measures that are guaranteed to save enough money on an annual basis over the life of the contract so that the Town can repay the associated debt. So a performance contracting model is not new. It's been around since about the mid-1980s, and it's highly regulated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to protect municipalities who want to use this measure to implement projects. So one major benefit to a performance contract is the Town's ability to implement a large variety of energy-saving projects without requiring a tax increase for our residents. So after the audit process is complete and the Town decides on the desired project scope, we're ultimately going to need a second Town Meeting vote, which we hope to bring back in the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. So hopefully that explains it. I know this is very complicated, so if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, I don't see any. You had mentioned that performance contracts have been around for a while. Have we used this for other things in Town before, or would this be the first time?
So this is the first time this method, or this financing method would be used in Westford, but it's been commonly used in surrounding communities such as Chelmsford, right next door. So it is not new to the area.
I don't see any questions. So you did a great job explaining it. Thank you. And it's really being proposed to protect the health of the pond and the environment surrounding the pond, and also just the quiet enjoyment for the neighbors who live on the pond. And one of the things and what prompted this article was the appearance of oil slicks on the pond that were certainly harming the aquatic life there that you may find, as well as obviously residents' enjoyment of the pond. So really, that's the purpose of this article, is to ban motorboats. There is an exception, obviously, for an emergency or if there's a need to control or remove aquatic plants.
Makes sense. And I guess if you had an electric motor, that would be?
That would be fine.
That would be okay. Great, and it looks like the Select Board is recommending this unanimously as well. Thank you. All right, I do not see any more questions. So guys, I'll do a great job in explaining the warrant. I would love to thank all of you for coming tonight and for the town officials and committee members for participating. Thank you to Westford Cat for recording it and for the voters for attending and participating in the most democratic form of government, Town Meeting. We'll see you on October 16, 1:00 PM, Trustees Field at Westford Academy. And remember, we need a quorum of 200 voters to start the meeting. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.